For being here with us, this is the April eighth, twenty twenty five town council meeting for town of Summerfield. Welcome. Thank you for being here. So we'll begin with our pledge of allegiance. I, if you would, please stand. Put hands over hearts, shared gallows. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please proceed. Call on our mayor pro tem, Lynn Venney, if you would, to have our invitation.
May please bow your heads. We're heavenly fathers. We thank you for the opportunity to meet here tonight. And thank you for all of the citizens of Summerfield. We thank you for all of our blessings. Lord, we know there are some who don't feel your compassion. Lord, we know there are many who are going through hard times. Lord, we ask you to simply peel back some of the darkness and let their and let all see your light. Lord, shine your light on Summerfield. Shine your light and unite and heal our hearts and all of our sickness. Lord, help us to walk and follow you with compassion, grace, and forgiveness. Lord, hear us and heal us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Ma'am, will you introduce? Ask our manager if he would begin our introduction.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Twig Monson's the town manager, and I'd like to introduce our new town clerk as of yesterday, Ms. Leah Rucker. She's come to us from Our State Magazine, so we're looking forward to having her onboard.
What happened?
Ashley Anderson, town attorney.
John Doggett.
Heath Clay.
Lynn Wiggins-Davany.
Tim Hessens.
Janelle Rollins.
John Hamilton.
Jeff making deck to these clerks now. We want a lot of hats yet. Item number two, our adoption of the agenda.
I'm gonna, I wanna make sure that we include item number ten. I know we had talked about it. To make sure that the council comments were part of, I think, the council reports. It doesn't look like it actually got put on there, and so I just wanted to make sure that, I guess, knew that council comments be made a part of number ten.
A second.
Council, I'm just trying to understand what we're talking about, but manager and council reports and updates.
And you want comments on there too? Like, reports, comma, updates, comma, and comments?
Yeah, we used to have comments right after public comments for the council, but we decided to merge those into the manager and council reports. So I just wanted to make sure those were put on there. I know they're understood to be there by the folks I've spoken with, but to just make it clear, board comments be part of, or council comments be part of number ten.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, further discussion on that?
I have one question, please. Mr. Manager, did we have the three twenty-five, twenty-five special comments? Or can we add those to yours, or we not get that?
We all have them prepared for tonight.
Okay, all right. I just want a double check. Thank you. Okay, I'm good.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion on item number ten? Here now, we call a question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Any other input on the agenda, or someone like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Have a motion, if you have a second.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, and that is unanimous. Item number three, announcements and recognition. I'm gonna call on Mayor Pro Tem Davany, if you would, to make the very special presentation.
Yes. So first of all, may I have these? All right. So I just met Eve. Is she lovely? She has her appearance here, Eve. Will you please come stand up here with us? This is Ms. Eve Morgan, and she submitted a design for our Founder's Day t-shirt. Well, for the Founder's Day committee, and she won the t-shirt design. She did an amazing job, and we're very, very, very excited for her. I'm gonna cheat a little bit. Eve is a freshman, right, ninth grade freshman at Northwest Gilford High School. She created this design for the Founder's Day event, and she had three different versions. And then we chose the one, we don't have a picture of that right now. Anyway, it's a surprise. You guys will see it. It is amazing. It's gonna look fabulous on the shirts. So we are just looking forward to having her come out, and we will get you a shirt. So Eve can get it, you can wear that, and put it in your portfolio, start working on that resume. So here's a certificate of appreciation. And then this is a book for Summerfield, so you can sketch in it and do resume ideas and that type of thing. Get you where you want to go after high school, okay? But thank you so much. We really appreciate it, and congratulations. Is Josie here? Oh, I'm sorry, Josie. And, come on up. You don't know how to mount a sign. So this is our certificate for Josie, and we appreciate your design work too. Josie was the honorable mention for the Hands on Summerfield Committee. So if you saw all the gentlemen with their dark blue t-shirts on, and it had hands, and sort of not a world that around figure with Summerfield, that was her design, and it was absolutely wonderful, so thank you very much. Josie is in the eleventh grade at Northwest High School. Oh, it says eleven. Okay, I'm sorry. Tenth grade, but thank you so much for putting your artwork together and continue on that talent that you have, and we wish you luck. College is coming soon.
Yeah, let them know that the town council voted that you get skipped the rest of the tenth.
Yeah, that's right. So thank you very much, and congratulations, and we also have a book for you. All right. May I have Caroline, please? This is Caroline Warham, and she is a senior at Bethany High School. And she won the competition for the Hands on Summerfield. And if you saw the ladies wearing the light blue t-shirts with the gloves and the Hands on Summerfield, they were absolutely wonderful. Loved the t-shirt design. You did a great job. Where are you all to after graduation?
Guilford for two years and then I transferred staff.
Excellent. Go pack. That's awesome. Well, thank you so much for coming out and doing this, and we also have a gift for you as well.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of announcements. Card? Card? Yeah, sorry. Thank you very much.
So Mayor Christie with announcements.
Okay. So I wanted to thank the entire community and everybody who came out to help the Hands on Summerfield. I see a lot of you in the audience, and I really appreciate you being out there. It was a wonderful time for all of us to get together and mingle and get together with one another. Special shout out to Jeanette Doctorie and staff who did a marvelous job. But they, it was phenomenal. I think everybody had a great time. Also, a shout out to the fire department. The lunch was wonderful, and they knew how to cook it together, and they even moved the timeline up thirty minutes, so it was great. We really appreciate everybody's chip in and enjoying it out. Also, I wanted to remind everybody, Founder's Day, May sixteenth and seventeenth. And if you haven't signed up for the parade, please go to the website. It's really easy. Click, click, and you're in. We want to have you. If you want to volunteer, you can contact Town Hall, and we will get you in a spot to volunteer. If you're a grant writer, if you'll reach out to me, I would love some help. I have some ideas to help us with some of our existing projects, like Vandera and A and Y, water, whatever, but in particularly Vandera. So if you're a grant writer and you have some time on your hands, please reach out. Oh, and I want to challenge the entire council, everybody sitting up here. I'm gonna include our attorney, our manager's already there. But everybody sitting up here to be a patron and sponsor for Founder's Day. And John has already done that. I've already done that. Mr. Manager and Janelle has done that as well. So I'm challenging the rest of you. So anyway, thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you. Moving on to our town public comments. So if anyone's interested in public comments, if you just grab a slip over there, you can fill it out. I'm just giving our manager there. He'll pass it around. I'll call your name out, and you can come up, give us your name and your address. Your three minutes will begin. You have up to three minutes to share on any topics that you'd like to share. This is a time for the public to have opportunity, have input, and we welcome your comments. So on advice of our new attorney, and very much appreciated her input in several different areas, and ideas and things that she's brought to the table. We're gonna really, going forward, we're gonna limit public comments and interactions after the period of public comment. So please, if you'd like to have a public comment, we'd love to hear from you. Just take our time, fill that out now, give that to Twig, and he'll pass it around, or, sorry, Mr. Rollins, he'll pass it around, and we'll give you a call. Just fill out your name, your address, and three minutes will begin. You can share this. So Pam Tocarnall.
I'd like to stand right here. I think everybody can hear me. Pam Tocarnall, sixty-eight hundred First Bank Road. Just a couple of wonders. I know that you all had a retreat. I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything about it. And I'm particularly curious as to how you see the town and where you see the town in the next twenty years, or the next ten years, or the next five minutes for that battle. I think that would be very informative to understand what your, some of your thinking might. My other curiosity was, who's paying for the defense of everybody here that's been, been named in a lawsuit? Does the town have an insurance policy to cover something like that? And if not, does this come out of there? I guess it comes out, has to be a budget wise. And then what happens if there's a monetary issue, multiple million dollars, it won't take much for it to pay. Is that covered enough insurance policy? And then my wonder is, the town may be so proud of this, you release his resume. After hearing the comments that were made about him at last month's meeting, I really am curious to see that resume, and I really am curious about how much due diligence was done. It seems like whoever did that let the town down. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tocarnall. Don Mendelvin.
Don Mendelvin, thirty-four, seventy, West Drive. I really didn't have any comments to make, but I hope that the council works well together. Yes, I submitted, and you see the confusion, but I'm just saying. But I hope the council works well together, and as we go forward, that things that are debated or questioned, it's transparency issue isn't needed as much, you know, where's the transparency? You hear people ask the question. I hope that you keep that in mind. And I should say, just keep going forward, and if we can get through all the bumps in the road and just kind of move forward now, and have a decent plan, and we have programs, or not programs, but you have things that are planned, A and Y, you know, Vandera, a variety of issues of things that need to be handled properly. So hopefully, all of that, meetings, information that comes from that is shared with the citizens. Really, that's all I gotta say. But I'd say, keep going forward. Let's do it with a good attitude. Thank you very much.
Duane Crawford.
Duane Crawford, eleven oh six, N C Highway one fifty west, those circles we had last month. Kind of reminds me of what's going on in Washington, D.C., all protests over Doge, looking at stuff, checking to see if everything ended up right. Everything squared, potion. I don't think there's anything wrong. Carry it through with the investigation. It should be done. And if there's nothing found, so be it. If there is something found, then we'll know. All protests about not looking, I have suspicions about. We need to look. Nothing wrong with that. Speaking of look, I'm here to talk in particular about a planning department application that Teresa Pickerman and I submitted. She's talked much more about it recently. I've talked much more about it in the past. Per town ordinance, we submitted a planning department application. Again, per town ordinance, with a fifteen hundred dollar fee. We have a receipt. We also circulated and got two thousand signatures in support of this planning department application. What is this application? Application took advantage of town ordinance that said, by right, we can submit an application to amend our complacency. And we did. The town received the money. We have the receipt. The town tried to get the money back. We said, no, we want our request fulfilled. I know on the download that the town tried to send the money to the state to put it in lost funds. What I wanna know is, where is that money today? It's not, if it's not in the planning department budget, and that request we have is still outstanding, somebody has done something wrong. Where is our money? And when are we gonna have our request fulfilled? We've been waiting a very long time, repeatedly asking. We asked about this before the U D O was even adopted, for what that's worth. We're still waiting. Thank you.
Wando Winfrey.
Forty-nine, I'm here. I've just been told a couple of things, I guess.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I can't hear real good. Did you speak to that microphone?
Oh, that mic fell down to you.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess I'm here because I've heard a couple of things, and, you know, you don't always know everything. Everybody's had different opinions. But I was told that everyone was contacted on, that would be affected by the sidewalk, but nobody ever contacted anyone. And I was told that they, everybody said that everybody along the sidewalk agreed to it. Well, I never agreed with them. And I kind of feel that a lot of time, like, the decision is made along complicated. I just kind of feel like these meetings really have no value. They're just a formality of, you know, this is what we have to do, check out these boxes. You know, I kind of feel like the decision was made along complicated. And I just wanna say that I kind of feel that it's wasteful spending, and I'm kind of a person that's not gonna spend money if I don't have to. You need to save it for a rainy day, and it really brings out the tears to a lot of personal property, and it's just not gonna go anywhere. It's just gonna stop. And if it was gonna connect to the next city or something like that, I mean, sometimes you have to override people's feelings. If it goes overall good, it has value, but if it's just gonna stop, it just hasn't value. I guess that's all.
Thank you. Judy Bastian.
Thank you for being here on a beautiful evening. It's Judy Bastian, six one zero one, four Ochs Court. And I just have a follow-up question to last month's meeting. And I'm asking you here because I figure others might have that similar question. Mr. Rollins, you've requested and received approval for an additional five thousand dollars for the forensic audit. And I just wanna understand what the additional funds were due, measures of password generation. And I wanna make sure I don't misunderstand what you said, you missed anything. Can you clarify what the additional funds were?
Ms. Bastian, I'm sorry. It's not a time for us really to respond.
During the call?
Yeah, but I'm sure the manager can follow up after the meeting, be able to gain that information in the future.
Okay, and my concern is that you have received the passwords and the phone codes, and you had what you needed, and maybe what I heard was just a part of the additional funds. And I'd just like to know how much money was there? And when you expect that audit to have the results? Because this went and said, you want to know if something is found, you'll take action, and if it's cleared, we can clean that, and that's good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Teresa Perry.
Teresa Perry, seven four zero one, Greenmont Drive. Can you really start that?
She hasn't started it. Sorry.
Geez, I've waited my whole three minutes. Sorry. I wanna talk about a couple of things. That fifteen hundred dollars, yeah. I know where that money went, but that wasn't my purpose of asking you where about fifteen hundred dollars went. I know it was misplaced funds. So y'all need to look into that, how that was held on because it was done wrong. And we do want our public hearing, and we do want our case served in front of the planning board like we were promised. We paid for it. We need to have that right done. Also, on this trail, it just really upsets me how y'all can say, you know, Janelle, I know you come down the road and say, hey, nobody on that road really wants it. Now, just because somebody's okay with a design does not mean that they're okay with it coming in front of their place. Nobody was ever asked that question. Everybody knows this is my sister. She was never contacted. Nobody's ever asked her opinion on it. I've got another cousin living down there who's saying, no, he was not contacted either. So if y'all wanna know how many people, if y'all would stop believing me or believe Janelle, go back and look at that informal informational meeting you had back in Janeway. There was a lot of people here that was against it, and this trail just needs to die and pass on and let it go somewhere else. It's leading to a dog crap, and I said that, I did say crap, park. And really, we're having a trail now that leads to dog crap. But if, you know, there's nothing we can do about the grease wall, and I understand that, but please stop this trail. Nobody wants it, and it could possibly bring in lawsuit. That's how bad people don't want, don't want this coming down their front yard. And the way Scott did it really upset me because he couldn't get the easements for these people. He said, you know, to me this, and I'm not gonna use those words, I'm really trying to hold on for it. Is that he said, okay, we don't have the rights to these people, so we're fine. We'll go get it D O T. And, you know, we're working a trail in front of you whether you like it or not, because he couldn't get the okay from the people who live down that street. And I was there. I've been through this. I know a lot of information that's not being told. Y'all are being lied to, and trust me, I'm about as much truthful a person in this, and people try to prove that otherwise, and let's see where that got them. But anyway, it comes up.
That concludes our town public comments. Item number five, public hearings, we have none. Item number six, administrative and board committee reports. We have our emergency services report.
Summerfield Fire District reported following March twenty twenty five, five hundred and eighty calls, point six, EMS related calls, fifty-two, other calls, forty-four, a total of one hundred and twenty-three calls. Five children, or child safety seats were installed, and two smoke alarms were installed. Guilford County Sheriff's Department reported two hundred and eighty-seven calls, fifteen cases reported, there were no significant incidents or crime returns in Summerfield from March twenty twenty five.
Thanks, sir. You have included in your packet of the financial reports and the boards and committee reports, so further discussion on those. Pause and wait for any discussion. Okay, item number seven, the consent agenda. Is there discussion on the consent agenda, or would someone like to make a motion? Pretty much one of those two things is gonna happen.
Well, I'm moved to accept and adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion, man. Second.
Second.
Have a motion, a couple of seconds. Any further discussion? Here now, we call a question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, seemingly we have no unfinished business. Item number nine, new business, A and Y project update. Mr. Manager, I'll turn it over to you to introduce this item.
Yes, sir. So I have Mr. Jeff Moore, our project manager from Kimberly Horn here, and he is prepared for an update on the A and Y project. And to answer any questions the council has at its time.
Thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to clarify the assignment that was given to me a couple of months ago. We have twenty-seven different property owners along the A and Y greenway, for which the town will be seeking some type, some form of easement. The assignment was to reach out to those for which we will need a permanent greenway easement. That totals eight different property owners. All eight of them have been contacted, and if I may, I'd like to share the results of each of those contacts. Met with the Vandergrims on February twenty-seventh, had a great discussion, and they ultimately agreed in concept or in principle to the greenway, going behind their own. They did agree to easements and all costs of everything, because we have to go through a process to acquire the actual easement, but they agreed in principle. And that's kind of how I'm gonna frame it tonight and explain the responses. Guilford County Board of Education spoke with Holly Nuttle, actually, on April third. She is the director of school planning for Guilford County Schools. I sent her maps and exhibits, but because it was April third, she needs to share those with attorneys within the Board of Education. They have a board meeting on April twenty-second, and their board agenda deadline is actually today, so she was planning on being able to submit that to them on the agenda today, and they're being, will be in two weeks from tonight. She said typically that's a consent agenda item for them. They have approved easements for trails and sidewalks of things of that nature around the school, around Guilford County Schools in the past. So she did not expect that to be an issue moving forward. But she certainly can't speak on behalf of the board, but she felt like it was, would be something. But she certainly can't speak on behalf of the board, but she felt like it was, would be something that the board could do behind. Also met with the Westergards back in March via a team's meeting. We had a great discussion the same day. They agreed in principle with the easement going behind the abandoned railroad right away behind their home. Finally spoke with Kelvin Jones of AT&amp;T. That's a very difficult contact to make because AT&amp;T is a very large corporation. But I got in touch with their real estate portfolio manager. He did not have an issue with it, didn't expect AT&amp;T would have an issue with it. This is the facility that's on the corner of Central Field and Summerfield. He was not aware of any plans or anything that would conflict with our project. He would like to share that with some of his folks, some of their engineers to make what he called the network organization group. He'll share that with them and get back to them if there's any issues, but he did not expect there to be any. They don't have to make any votes or anything, but he felt like that would be fine in principle as far as the greenway itself. Met with the Guilford Battle Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. I'll shorten that up to DAR. Met with Marty Smith and one of their board members back in February at the monument site and laid out where the trail is proposed to go. I'll very quickly say that they met on April fourth as a board and voted to sell a fifteen-foot strip of land to the town for the A and Y greenway. There is an existing fifteen-foot pathway easement, but that was intended for the loop around the school. And it's not something they, and it's actually close to the monument. So they're going to push it as far away from the monument as possible, right against the fence, which is their direction in their minutes. They'll provide those minutes to us when they're, when they're approved, which probably will be at their next board meeting. Met with number six, the Summerfield Fire District. They had their board meeting a month ago, the same night as y'all's meeting on March eleventh. On April first, the fire chief sent me a copy of their draft minutes. The motion was made to accept the design as presented, and they recommended moving forward with the project as long as it included warning devices. So it was stipulation by the fire district to include some warning signs and some devices that will work out. It can work out there in final design. It was segmented by another person in the past by the board. Number seven, Summerfield Medplex, that is the chiropractic and dentist office over by Halligan Road. Met with Dr. Brown and his dentistry business partner back on March twenty sixth. We had a great discussion, but ultimately they did not agree in principle with the trail going in front of their business. Their preference would be for it to go a different location. And what is happening there is we are seeking to build this entire path, the curving of the side path itself, within the existing NCDOT roadway. And that is sixty feet, which means thirty feet on each side of the center line. And for some reason, it just so happens to be less there, fifty-five feet. So it's thirty and twenty-five over on his property. So what we talked about with, with the town is to reduce the side path width to eight feet. So instead of two and a half and ten, it would be two and a half and eight. So ten and a half foot of the infrastructure that would fit within the roadway and therefore wouldn't need any permanent easements along his property. Our preference would still be a temporary easement just for maintenance and for constructability, but not a permanent easement, which is different than what we had a couple of months ago. I'll, quick side note, reached out to NCDOT out of conversation with Steve Robinson, who was in Division Seven in Greensboro. The NCDOT roadway design actually stipulates a ten-foot trail, but it says eight feet in constrained areas. So we would consider this in constrained area, and we would give their sign off to, to be able to reduce the path. He did not share a desire to make eight feet wholesale, like, he did not agree with, with eight feet from Myers Fork Road all the way to the very end. But he certainly believed that based on my description, constrained areas could warrant the reduced path in certain areas. And that's what we proposed to them, and we should hear back from the Integrated Mobility Division very soon with an answer. To me, it's in their design manual, but certainly as our partner in this project, we wanted their buy-off on those types of things. Landmark Enterprises of Stokesdale was also a permanent greenway easement. They have a property manager, Mr. Burgess, and I've had many conversations, phone calls and emails with him. I've had a hard time explaining what we're asking, and I've been sending in very, very clear maps to explain the situation to him. I guess I have not had a chance to meet with the actual property manager, but only the property manager. So the idea here would be reduce the path width to eight feet through this section of trail as well, which would actually connect well to the Medplex and the three different areas that I'll talk about in a minute. And therefore try to reduce any permanent easements at all, try to get everything within the, within the existing roadway. And if we have to retain poles and not have to make permanent utility relocations, that would reduce, eliminate the permanent easements along this track as well. And then lastly, Pyramid White Properties, these are the two, the mobile home and the single-family residence that's very close to Summerfield Road. Same situation here, we're thinking about reducing the path to eight feet through here to eliminate these permanent easements along their property. With the exception being potentially some poles, there's actually a power pole in front of the mobile home right now. And Duke Energy would like to slide that to the north, which would require a permanent utility easement, but would get it out of the way of other actual residents. But I haven't spoken with them specifically about that. Couple more things, and I told the manager, ask me very quick, so will me. Wondor Winfrey, there was a small strip of permanent greenway easement along their property, but that has been reduced and it will be retained within the existing roadway so that there would only need to be temporary construction easement there as well. And the reason why we didn't reach out to one or others when there was only temporary easement situations, because like I said, it's twenty seven. That would take a while, and the assignment was to make sure we reached out to the eight in relation to a permanent easement. Couple of questions, very quickly from the council that we've had over the last couple of months. What is the largest easement? And the answer to that question is there's a sixteen thousand square foot easement along Guilford County. And the reason for that is because there's an abandoned railroad right away. Getting an abandoned railroad right away, you know, twenty-foot, thirty-foot, twenty-five-foot easement is pretty wide, pretty long. So that was, that was a pretty, pretty good-sized easement. The largest permanent drainage easement was along Landmark Enterprises. And as I mentioned before, as we reduce that, that section of path to eight feet, we'll be able to reduce that permanent drainage easement as well. Quick question.
Hold on, can, I need to catch up with my notes.
All right, very good, absolutely done. So the, the greenway easement, if you take the, the eight properties that we were applying for, we were seeking a, a permanent greenway easement, it represents two point one percent of their total property. It's a little bit over two percent of the overall property, simply because most of what we're asking for is a strip right along the roadway itself. Or, and part of that is the abandoned railroad right away is, is their property which constitutes most of that. The permanent drainage and utility easements constitute zero point two percent of the overall land values. Those are typically guy wires and poles that are just being slid out and we put a twenty by thirty easement around the poles themselves. Someone asked me the projected costs. Let me, I'll come back to that. So the next step for this project is we need a signed consultation, which is an environmental document that updates to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act. It's been signed by the town, and it's awaiting NCDOT signatures, and that's only as of last week, so I'm sure we'll get that very soon. We need NCDOT plan approval, that's something I shared with you back in January at the public meeting. And NCDOT on the phone with me said he felt like that was fine, that they reviewed our plans, everything was fine. And they should be able to give authorization to the town very soon. So what we do is ask them for roadway authorization, and that would give us the greenway to actually go acquire easements. So no action is needed necessarily from y'all, we're under contract to go acquire easements. But we wanted to present this update and answer the questions about the eight property owners that we reached out to. One big question is, that's great, next step is to acquire easements, but what would that cost? So the calculation, as I mentioned, twenty seven properties, and our roadway firm charges five thousand two hundred dollars per parcel, which adds up to, right, about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. There could be, we expect a couple of appraisals because anytime the value's over twenty-five thousand dollars for the actual easement, we have to do appraisals. So that would be, we, I would assume about five or six different appraisals, multiply that would be about twenty-seven thousand. So the total that we estimate was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. To go from today to a situation where we get reached out to all twenty seven property owners, and we lay offers and we work through the agreements. And if there's any that, that don't work out to, to a settlement, that's what they would bring back, that's what we would bring back to the town council, you know, several months from now to propose the time to take back to make those contacts. And that's my update. Thank you.
You don't have any questions? Questions from the council?
You mentioned temporary easements. We said you might go, go for those later because you just said they were temporary, but do we still need those people's permission for temporary easements?
So the wet works, the roadway process, the wet works, is our roadway firm involved in Uniform Relocation Act, which is a federal, a federal law. They would meet with each property owner typically on site, just because they'll do an evaluation of the property itself and be able to make a valuation of the easement cost. Sometimes they'll appraise us, which would be an independent appraisal that would be approved by, by the department. So what, how this works is they would make a written offer to the property owners for any easements, whether they be temporary or permanent. And then the property owner has a decision about whether to accept it, whether to negotiate it, or some other, some other response.
So the short of it is, yeah, we still need their permission.
That's correct.
And, and you said you were just waiting, why were you waiting again to talk to them?
To the other twenty, to the other nineteen?
Yeah.
The, the direct announcement provided was only to reach out to the eight, just because those were permanent greenway easements, which were considered a higher level of easement rather than a temporary construction easement that would be temporary. There would be a value to that, but once the, once the construction is over, the contractor demobilizes, the easement goes away. So the, the properties are returned back to its original condition. And those were not considered at the same level of, of discussion.
Do you have any reason to believe those folks will not give the easement?
I, I have not met with them personally. Certainly we've had public meetings, and I've had, had opportunities to speak with folks individually, but I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I know a lot of our concern would just end at the name of that. Some of us appear not interested in doing that at all, that's why I'm trying to, if we can, if we know that that's going to happen, then we don't want to waste money on it, rather than go ahead and have a vote to, to, to see what's going to happen with them. So I guess my question is, as soon as we can figure out whether or not that is going to be a necessity, we need to know right away if we could.
Well, the only way that we can do that would be to reach out to the other nineteen folks.
But we already know some said no. At least one said no, and one is maybe not likely, and the other one they didn't reach out to. So the other people that, there are, I mean, other, you have talked to other people who it's probably not likely.
We've certainly had public meetings.
Like, like this sort of meeting?
We've all had, also had small group meetings, as we call it, where we sit down and talk with, with individual property owners. And a lot of times their neighbors and other folks join, so it makes a little bit better meeting, but allows us to have a little bit bigger audience to talk, to talk to, to talk about the project and answer questions.
But for those ones that you're working something out, that you've spoken with, you think shortening the, from ten to eight will make it so there's not one necessary?
So I'll, just to clarify, this would eliminate permanent easements.
So you still have to get a temporary easement even from them, and if they say no, what happens then?
So the reason why we need temporary easements is because even though we can fit the infrastructure within the DOT right away, there's still not a lot of space. Just, you have to have space for workers, for laborers, for equipment.
No, I mean, what I mean is, what, what happens if they say no?
Then the normal process would be to file a condemnation. That's when, when the property owners decline the offers or we cannot negotiate a reasonable settlement, then that's the next step.
And so we know at this point that someone, the gentleman that you, I'm just trying to make sure I know it because I don't have a comment. The gentleman that will not give the permanent easement that we were looking for to eight, we still need a temporary one from him?
That's correct.
Do we, did you talk to him about getting a temporary one?
I did.
And what was the response there?
The response was that the preference would be for the trail to go to a different location.
So he said no?
That's correct.
So since he said no, what's the next step that we would take with him?
Just like I mentioned, we would go through a right-of-way acquisition process.
Combination.
We would go through the right-of-way acquisition process where we make an offer and sit down with him to go through the offer and see what his response is.
But if he still says no, then that's the one that goes down.
If he still says no, then sure, that would be, that would be the next legal step.
And he's already said he's not interested in the offers?
He didn't say he's not interested in offers, he's just against, in principle, the trail going in front of his home or in, in front of their place of business.
Why, why did you pick the acquisition company that you picked?
Good question. So Right-of-Way Consultants is actually a firm we have on our team. And they chose, made a business decision to close their business, to have it listed sale. And several of their folks went to a place called Right Path Acquisitions, and that we're going to use Right Path Acquisition. It's a lot of the same people, and they're still at a small professional service firm. And I, I know their guys and we trust them to do, to do that work.
But aren't they kind of proud of not having, not having to end it in a manner or anything like that?
That's a great question. These, these right-of-way firms pride themselves on not having to go through a combination case. They are very professional, very polite in the business that they, that they conduct. And their goal is to, to, to work out a settlement. It's a real estate transaction, and that is their goal. Have they ever had a combination? I'm sure they've had, and they're, you know, many, many years of, of experience, but, but certain, that is never the, the first and only goal. It is, it is always to work with the property owners and, and develop a amicable solution for, for all parties.
So I have a question. You pointed out several places. The Medplex at AP. I think you'll correct me if I'm wrong, this one, the Winfrey property at AP, maybe, no?
Um, ten feet, it can remain ten feet there, there's enough right-of-way, but.
Okay, so now I'm going to go south to the Medplex, the Landmark, and then the.
Pyramid White.
Pyramid White. Anything south of the Pyramid White? No.
So all temporary construction easements.
Okay, so if, if you do eight feet there, I understand that because of the way the GIS maps are in front of the Medplex, you go higher than that. You have the eight feet, ten and a half total. How much more do you need for construction? What I'm wondering is if, if, if the right-of-way allows twelve and a half or more, can you stay within the right-of-way to build the ten and a half?
That's a, that's a great question, and there's going to be areas where we can, and there's going to be areas where we can't. And the reason for that is we, we design a two-foot shoulder at the edge of the path for stability, for erosion, to make, you know, to, to make it last. And from that two feet, we typically go down as a three-one or two-one slope, and some people, if we're higher, sometimes we go up at a two or three-one slope if we're lower. So that slope is going to get very close to that right-of-way. And sometimes, sometimes it's going to pass it, we have a little bit of a higher situation than normal. And we like to go from the, from the construction limit out at least five feet for temporary easement, just, just to give ourselves cover, you know, for the purpose of construction. And that slope sometimes is going to track outside the existing right-of-way, but it's, it's short, it's dirt, it's not part of the infrastructure itself, but it just allows us to tie in our slopes and keep everything stable.
Okay. Is there any way, you said DOT didn't want to necessarily make it, I'm going to talk a total with, ten and a half. I think with the parking lot, that keeping the twelve and a half, I'm at the trailhead crossing Summerfield Road, you have the parking lot. If you kept it twelve and a half there and then starting at the next person's property heading north, is there a way to go eight feet from there all the way to the fire station, eight feet?
If we have to, I believe we can make a case that these are all constrained areas. For the purpose of, of trying to build the trail, keep the trail, keep the entire built-up infrastructure within the existing roadway, including the shoulder and possibly the other. including the shoulder, and possibly be able to build it entirely within the right way. I think we can make that case.
When would we know we have that case made with DOT?
So the division, this Division 7 in Greensboro, they reached out to the Integrated Mobility Division to add this point. So I'm sure it'll take us another week or so to to hear back from them. The question for them was only the constrained areas, it was not a whole cell. Now, I don't know if they'll share the whole cell question with me, the whole cell would be from the fire station all the way to the to the trailhead. But that's the question we're certainly asking.
But it's my understanding based on what I've heard today and since the last meeting, that that's where, that is a constraint, that whole area. So that's why I want to know, can you make that whole area eight? But also, there's a part of the trailhead, and you may know where it is, that was actually turned into sidewalk in certain constrained areas as it transitions. Just just putting it out there, is that something that can be done so that if there's an issue with temporary easements, you can keep everything in the DOT right way? I've personally experienced temporary easements. And they fixed it back. It's a little bit different just because they had to put a larger culvert in at my driveway. But for the most part, I mean, everything was put back the way that it was originally before they got there and started messing with the dirt. They just needed, in fact, they wanted buy land, they were redoing the bridge and they just wanted buy land to be able to park vehicles on. So I got rent money.
So to answer your question, because the roadway design manual specifically states 10 feet, that's the minimum, but with eight feet in constrained areas, I believe the business will allow that. The reason why I chose or wanted to reach out to them at DOT is, like I said, they're a partner. And they're approving the design and they want to make sure that everything's done according to ADA and ASCHO and all of their standards. And I didn't want to slip that in, I mean, I wanted to reach out to them and let them know that we do have some constrained areas and make sure that they will be able to afford it. As your engineer, I'm comfortable with it and I think we can move forward with it. But also think at the same time it's important to make sure that our stakeholder, our, since the town has a municipal ring with the state, to make sure the state understands why and what we're doing. And there's about it now, rather than willing to submit 100% points. So I'm happy to follow up with them again tomorrow. I'll wait to hear back, but I did not hear back from them today.
I'm hoping. Okay. Just going down my list. Okay, if we start with the, if I start with the Medplex. I think that you discussed with him the easement. Did you, okay, I think if I understand correctly, there's two easements on this property. The drainage easement and another one, correct?
Yes, when I met with him. So by reducing the path to eight feet, we're able to eliminate the drainage structure.
Can you show me that on a map or something, how that worked out?
I don't have a map with me, I do not.
I'm wondering how the drainage easement, how we don't, by taking two feet off the trail, how the permanent drainage easement disappeared?
So there's already an existing system along that, there's a ditch that goes up to the to the stormwater line that's that's on his property. This particular box is barely outside of the existing right way. It was barely, barely outside of the existing right way, but elevation wise, spatially, that was where it needed to be. And because even if it's six inches on this private property, we would need that. But by going two feet inside of that, we were able to eliminate it entirely.
Is it the box that's already there or that we're going to put in?
The box that we were going to put in could be eliminated based on the fact that we reduced it in that manner. I'm I'm happy to share the design with with the manager and he can share that with you, but my apologies for not having that here this evening.
I just need to understand how changing it by two feet took away the need for the drainage easement. And I've looked at the maps, but I don't know, they're hard to understand, I think, if you're not reaching your family.
No, I totally get that, I understand that.
So you are telling me that there will not be a need for a permanent drainage easement from Dr. Brown?
That's correct. And I'm happy to share, like I said, a map with him.
Yes, a temporary easement would be needed and we know that's not going to, he that's, he's not going to go for that. So that means it would be, the way I'm trying, kind of phrasing it in my mind is a temporary eminent domain? Is that kind of what it ends up being? Well, is a condemnation process the same thing as eminent domain?
Yes, that is essentially the same thing.
So we would need a temporary eminent domain from all those people?
No, eminent domain is a, is a statutory law that provides municipal government, state government to condemn property in the event of public construction, but serves a common good, a great good. The condemnation is a court filing that basically says that if the property owner is not agreeable to a settlement, then the town has the statutory authority to take it in court. And and that's, and that's really not any easement because it's not, it's not the temporary or permanent or different in a way. It's the same real estate transaction, whether it's temporary or permanent. But permanent is permanent, and that was the reason why I would do it, it's considered a different level of of communication.
What would we be seeking from court, just for him to allow us to do that and how to answer your question, temporary easement?
Like all these people that we need temporary construction easements from, if if, let's say, 10 of them say no, do we have to go to court and do this whole process for all 10 of those?
I believe that you would, yes.
But what would we be seeking from the court, just to allow us to have temporary?
That's correct.
And then once it's done, would you ever?
That's correct. I mean, the the town still pays for the temporary easement, so it's just a matter of of what?
No, I'm sorry.
And we have to pay for that, to go to court, for all those properties that are along there that are going to say no?
Hypothetically, yes, you would, there would be a court cost to the town, just like any other court procedure.
There'd be, there'd be cost to the property owner if they would, if we took them to court, correct?
That's correct, they would have to have legal representation as well for their life, unless they're returning.
So all those property owners are going to have to, all those property owners that live there now, that don't want this?
Let's ask you one more question.
I I still have little questions, I'm just wanting to understand this because I hadn't heard about court costs for us to take them all to court. All the ones that say no to temporary easements will have to pay a court cost for each one of them and they will have to pay for representation, each of them themselves. Okay, I didn't realize that. Landmark, it sounds like they may not, we're we're going to try to reduce the drainage easement there because it sounds like they may not say yes. They have not said yes, correct?
They they've not said yes or not, as we call it, so it's a coordination with them, that's correct.
And Pyramid White, you have not spoken with them?
Correct, there was not a permanent greenway easement in front of their property.
It was a permanent utility easement?
Correct.
And we don't need their permission for that?
The same rules apply of any easements. We require them to settle, the the right way firm would need to settle any easements with the property owners.
And if they say no, then what?
Same, the same rules apply.
Eminent domain?
Correct.
And what those utility easements, are we, are we, have agreed to pay somebody for those utility easements? If you're not paying the homeowner, we're paying the, like, give me an utility easement if you got it.
I'm not sure what you mean.
Give me it.
Like moving the the light poles, so in front of the Pyramid White property, there's an existing power pole that is in front of the north structure. And it's my understanding that due power, do they want to upgrade that? And they're going to, when they upgrade it, they're going to move it north? Or is that going to be on us to do an easement to have it moved north? Which one?
That's, that's, yeah. Well, thank you for the clarification. I'll, I'll answer that, make sure that that answers your question. So there are existing power poles that are in the way of the path, I mean, they're all along Summerfield Road. And some of them will be in the path unless we move them, so we reach out to them.